Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Harrison?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Betts asked to be excused for tonight. Thank you.
All right, so why don't we go ahead and deal with excuse appices at the end of the meeting? So go ahead and move on to approval of the April 24th, 2023 minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? Not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Is there anybody either in person or online who would like to make a public comment tonight for anything that's not on the agenda items?
No public comment has been received by email or mailed by 4:00 PM today. We have one attendee, but he did not have any public comment to make. And no virtual audience, oh, hold on. We have, yeah, no virtual audience received so far.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, continued discussion on proposed amendments to engineering standards, water construction inspections and closeout.
Good evening. Let's see. This is the... Did you bring it up already? Oh, thank you. This one. Okay. I gotta share it. Okay. And then... Zoom. Nope. Sorry. There we go. Okay, let's see. This is our fourth presentation? No, third one, third one. And we're just about done with the whole document. So our next planned submittal will be on the 12th. So June 12th, which is about three weeks away, I think. We're going to bring in the complete document for your review, including all the appendices. So for tonight's presentation, I was gonna go through the administration and permitting sections and the right-of-way in the street section. There's a lot of material in those, so I was gonna try and just jump into that. There were some questions that we're still looking into from the last meeting. I was gonna try and wrap up all the questions and comments that we've generated so far with next presentation on the 12th. And after the complete document is presented, then we'll have another public hearing to go over the comments that we've got so far. And then after that, we'll be, I think, presenting to council so that we can hopefully get this document approved and adopted this summer. So that's our tentative schedule so far. Are there any questions about the schedule yet? All right, well, I'm just gonna dive into section one. So again, the point of what we're trying to accomplish with this engineering development guide is we're trying to take standards that are located in a number of places. Some are in codes, some are in comp plans, some are in standard details, and try to combine them all into one document. And we're also hoping to address some of the areas that we really don't have any direction for engineering design details in our current, in any of the codes for our city. So here's our first attempt. This document that we're using is a template that we got from Shoreline. So you may see some occasional references to Shoreline. We're still working out all the reference details, so I've highlighted some of them in yellow in the drafts that you've seen. The ones that are in yellow are the ones that we're still gonna update with the final references when this document gets closer to the final publication. And then our intent is to, once we get this adopted, is to begin working on the next version of it, which will include some of the topics that may have been a little more controversial, need a little more time to work out the details for. So there will be a version two of this document that we hope to adopt next year. So just going through the Division One, the intent, the organization of this whole document is to try to take a developer through the whole process of the development in the city, starting with the permit process, going into the design process. There's a stormwater section, a water section, a sewer section, construction and inspection, all the way through project closeout. So the permit section is gonna take... It's got in section 3.1 a whole schedule on the permit process. Just for those that aren't familiar with it, it kinda just helps to introduce the process to people. It'll go through details like the pre-app meetings, some of the issues or the processes with plan review and approval, kinda sets some of the timings for how long it takes to get a permit reviewed and when they could possibly expire, just a reminder of that. Let's see. The permit submittals, the details that you go through when you're trying to prepare a set of plans, the requirements for the designers and the surveyors, the different reports that they'll need, like a stormwater report and a geotech report, the traffic impact analysis and the traffic control plans. There's also gonna be issues that they have to deal with, with easements and right-of-way and if they have a tract. Insurance requirements. There is some, if I could highlight that on section 4.14 and the insurance requirements. Right now, I've highlighted the limits of the insurance. We're verifying that with WCIA about what the recommended insurance requirements are. I've heard some places are increasing these amounts, and so we'll verify that before the final document. There's also a section on permit fees. This is another area that we're gonna be updating some more as we get more information about what's the appropriate fees and the different things that we're gonna be doing. We have to generate some new fee schedules associated with that. I think that we were, we're planning on another fee revision in November-ish. We may come in with some earlier fees before that, but I know that the current plan is to bring back a full set of plan or fee revisions in the November timeframe. Are there any questions on the permit process?
I had a quick question. You were, they mentioned that you, the timelines here for the permit. Is there, since this is kind of a, you know, an overall guide to an applicant, you know, that step-by-step, will there be any kind of, maybe like a link to an online reference to what the city's current permitting timelines are? For even, you know, being able to review or process? I know, I know in Seattle, the various departments usually have a website that they can update that says, hey, right now, if you're applying for this type of permit, it's generally six weeks, or this requires a secondary review, that's 12 weeks. And, you know, times that by all the different departments and sometimes it's updated, sometimes it's not. But it gives, it gives the customer, you know, a general idea, hey, I'm submitting this today. How long is it gonna be before somebody even takes a look at it?
Yeah, that's a, that's very useful information, especially if you have permits in. We are in the process of updating our permitting system to hopefully be able to track that information in a more real-time manner. I don't know if there'll be a link to this right of way, but that could be something that we look at adding in the future as we get a better handle on that type of tracking information.
And then, since we're talking about links real quick too, it's just kinda curious. Normally, with, like, if your website updates or the web link address changes, is that just considered a simple technical correction that staff can make to the document as opposed to having it have to go before us in city council?
Yes, that's a, that's a technical change that we... Let me step back a little bit. The point of this document is we were trying to make us, make it more easy and nimble to update the document without having to go to council and planning commission. I could see us coming back for, you know, updates and revisions that way, but when you have to update code, for example, you have to go through a much more lengthy process. So by, by assigning more of the responsibility for the design details themselves into this document, we can bypass some of the more lengthy judiciary and legislative approval process, which, again, that gets back to we can make quicker corrections more often to this document than we could to the code.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, so then I'll move on to Division Two for right-of-way. So for the right-of-way, I've got a list of a lot of the companion documents that we kinda use as citations for references for the design details. This is kind of a living list. There could be more design reference materials that we would add to this at times. We've been going through and trying to verify some of these references again. And one of them that I found that I've already wanted update is the standard rock wall construction guidelines. I found a more recent document that the FHWA has put out that I think is probably gonna be more appropriate and easier for people to obtain. This document from the Associated Rockery Contractors is, there's a lot of references to it, but try to find the document, I haven't even been able to find it myself. So I want one that's a lot easier for our developers. One of the questions, you'll see it's a little bit inconsistent through here, but we'll finalize this in the doc, in the end document, is that deviations from the engineering standards, would that be the purview of the director of public works or the city engineer? You know, so we're trying to decide where that level of authority would rest. I think it would rest on somebody with credentials, like a professional engineer license, to be able to decide what professional engineering standards we're okay to change. Whether our public works director has a PE or not, we're still working through that. So maybe the flexibility of having the engineer standards under the city engineer would be more appropriate. But it could also be the public work director or designee. So we'll work through those issues and then make sure it's consistent in the final document. Let's see, on chapter seven, 7.2, we've got a section pointing to low-impact development. I know that was some of the comments that we brought up in past meetings is making sure that we had some links to low-income development, LID. So here's one of those passages, and it will refer them to some other areas in the document. And it'll eventually end to some of our standard details too. So we wanted to make sure that not only is low-income development addressed, but we're gonna wanna make a good, strong showing of that because that's a very important feature that our city that we wanna emphasize. Low-impact development, cleaner water, those only help us in the future. A topic that keeps coming up that I thought we should talk about is on section 7.6, underground utilities. So we don't have a lot of language that I've been able to find that requires undergrounding of utilities. And so this is a topic that can, you know, have a lot of pros and cons. The cons, obviously, are the added development cost to underground utilities. Some of the pros are more of a long-term benefit in that we have some more resiliency in the case of storms and such. You know, visual impacts and improving livability of neighborhoods. So it's gonna be, I think, the challenge is finding the right balance to make sure that we're undergrounding utilities where it makes sense and maybe deciding in what situations where it wouldn't make sense. But in any event, I think that there's a lot of interest in undergrounding of utilities, and we felt that it needed to be addressed in this document. So if the utilities are undergrounded, here's kind of how that would go about.
So we spent several meetings going over undergrounding of utilities and making recommendations to the city council. So is that what this, referring to the highlighted section, where there's no actual reference number right now? Is that what's gonna be plugged in, is what council voted on?
Yeah, yes. You know, we'll link that together. There's going to be, some of these reference numbers, you'll just see the XXXs in there. When we get to the council portion, we're also gonna need to propose revisions to the code. And there will be some elements that are in the code that will move into this document, or there'll be some elements in the code that we have to create. And so until those get worked out, that's why some of these references are left as the XXX.
So I know a lot of our discussion was spent on what's the trigger, especially, you know, for, especially when it's like a remodel. Will that be referenced in this document as well? Or will they just be told, go, go look at the actual code for the specifics?
It will be referenced in this document. They will be consistent with each other.
Okay.
We don't, we don't wanna change what we've already agreed to in this document. We wanna reflect what we've agreed to. I think section 7.7 was when we get into frontage improvements. I think there's some areas in this one here that we'll verify with the code and the comp plans to make sure that those are all consistent also. This is our first stab at it, but I think there's a little bit of verifying to make sure that there's no contradictory direction in here. In the end, you know, the code is going to be the, the top ruler of decisions on that. We're trying to take design standards out of the comp plans and make sure that if they're not in the code, they'll be in this document. Section 7.9 is illumination. While there are illumination requirements, we don't really have a fixed standard for that. And so this is our first shot at trying to make our illumination standards more consistent across the city. This is an area that I've started to gather information from other jurisdictions and other publications to see if we're kind of in the right ballpark when we suggest these. I think some of these lighting standards are probably a little bit lower lights than what we've seen in the town center plan. And so it's, there's a lot of flexibility in the light standards, depending on your light fixture, the brightness, the height of it. There's a whole bunch of the spacing. So you can get a lot of different lighting levels depending on all the different variables. We wanted to try to standardize that a little bit so we can have more consistent lighting levels in our city.
Well, that, so we, there's a certain design aesthetic that was in play when the, the type of fixtures and the appearance were picked, specifically for the town center. This is going back to the original town center plan from over a decade ago that carried over to this new one. As part of the lighting package, it also said, hey, these are what the bike racks are gonna look like. This is what the benches are gonna look like, you know. You know, to have a specific appearance. That's something that I intend to have carry over to our other sub-areas as well. You know, something that uniquely identifies the, you know, those specific neighborhoods. Would that be impacted by trying to uniform, have a uniform lighting style and appearance across the city? Or would the, the different neighborhood sub-areas be able to still have some unique lighting design and standards that are separate from the rest of the city?
It won't affect the appearance of the fixtures or anything, or the benches, or the, or any of those urban design features. The standards are gonna probably affect the spacing the most. For example, when I look down 236, there's a light pole or a ped light pole. It seems like every 50 feet. So you end up with a number of poles in just one block face. So there's not a lot of uniformity with that. Uniformity is one of the lighting level measures, and that's the difference between the bright spots and the low spots to the bright spot. So there's, there's a kinda national standards about what's a good uniformity ratio. Right now, I think our uniformity ratio is like one to one or maybe one and a half to one. It's pretty, there's not a lot of variations between the light and the dark. And the usual standard for that is more of a three to one or four to one. So we, our sidewalks in the town center area on 236 and on 56, we're gonna be pretty bright. So in some areas, that makes a lot of sense if we have a lot of retail there, but there's also gonna be ambient light from the retail. So it's just taking another look at that to see if, you know, do we need as many poles on the sidewalk? Or do we want it to be a little more open for more trees and things like that? We're just revalidating what the standards are. And if there's any changes that we think might need to be made, then that's what we would bring back to you guys.
All right.
Let's see, if I could point you to 7.11. Here's a new item that a lot of jurisdictions have, and that's a pavement cut moratorium. So one of the, when we repave a street, you know, there's a big investment in a nice, clean roadway. And then there's nothing right now that would penalize anybody to decide they're gonna go make a service utility connection or do something to, you know, put a big hole right in the middle of your brand-new pavement. So we would like to adopt some language that would put some type of a moratorium. And I think we're proposing five years, which is pretty standard. That if somebody was to have a project that had to cut into that, they couldn't just put in a patch, they'd have to do an overlay on that side of the street. So it's part of a way to protect our investment in a newly paved roadway. So we have language in there for that.
It's, it's part of the language in, you know, the waiver process to...
Yes. When, I mean, there will be times when somebody needs to cut into a street, especially in an emergency or, you know, for some unforeseen development. So we have some language proposed now, we may end up having to add to it. But we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that in case people have more questions or wanna see more detail on that.
There is a big concern that I see at work, at my job with moratoriums. A lot of inquiries come in wanting to know, hey, is there a pavement moratorium here? Even though there's an online map that can tell them exactly where moratoriums are currently in effect. But one I got recently, it was, you know, it was right next to a moratorium. So that side of the street moving west, they're fine. And they're probably not gonna be impacted by the moratorium. But I know kitty corner across the street, there's another development that's coming in that is gonna be impacted. And so because, I mean, right now, we don't really have that issue of, you know, freshly paved roads that are competing against new proposals of development. But I suspect at some point, we're gonna get there. So I'm just, my only concern with the moratoriums is holding up, you know, potential development, you know, for four or five years. If the developer, you know, you know, they need to make a small cut, you know, for like a side sore or something, you know, undergrounding utilities, and they gotta wait five years. So I mean, it sounds like there's, there's a waiver process, but how much they're gonna have to replace for the work that they actually end up doing? I'm for keeping our freshly poured pavement and not having it cut up all to high heck, but I, I know that that will, that'll become more of an issue as we, as we see the redevelopment start and we start fixing the roads, and then all of a sudden, new projects get proposed. But, you know, we, either they don't wanna wait five years to do it, and we don't necessarily want them to have to wait five years either.
Exactly. That's why we will have some mechanism so that it, it won't necessarily stall their project, but it would be an added cost that they would have to consider. When I look at 56, when we do our main street project, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that we address our complete street concepts, so try to replace as many of the utilities as part of that reconstruction so that we're not the ones that are out there tearing it up. But there will be some developers that come in there that may have to make a connection. And so we recognize we have to have some way to tell them, you know, here's what would happen if you cut into that pavement within that five years.
Okay.
Let's see, chapter eight is our transportation impact analysis. We have some language in the code about when it's, when it's required. We've added some more language to kinda flesh that out a little bit. And then there'll be even more detail in the appendix. So when somebody does a traffic impact analysis, you know, we wanted to be able to tell them what would make a complete report. There's one question in, in the impact analysis. Currently in the code, it says if a project will generate 10 or more new vehicle trips in a PMP hour. A lot of places will actually default to 20. 10 means that we'll get more reports to look at because the threshold is lower. We need to make a decision, I guess, is what is the right number when we need to see a new traffic analysis? Is 10 trips or more? We'll keep a better look at it, but is that really gonna be of that much more benefit? Or do we wanna leave the threshold, or move the threshold to 20? We've also got some other criteria when it's required and 40 or more trips in a day. So pretty much, almost all developments are gonna have more than 40 trips in a day, especially in a commercial area. So it's something to think about. You know, that's currently in our code, and we're gonna discuss a little more internally to decide if there's any suggestions that we wanna make as to if we should revise the code on that. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as a discussion point in the future.
Our analysis is currently being made on applications that come in?
Oh, definitely. It's just whether they're required to do an analysis is based on this number of trips that they're proposing. And with 10 or more trips in a PMP hour, on pretty much every development is gonna require a traffic analysis. Some of the smaller developments, you know, you know, for some of the homes and stuff, if, if it's multifamily, but it's, you know, I wanna say if it's a fourplex or bigger, they'll have to do a traffic analysis. But I can't remember off the top of my head. It's a low threshold, and so...
Is this threshold uniform across the city? Or is there a difference between kind of, you know, like core commercial areas of the neighborhoods versus residential neighborhoods? Like, say, somebody's operating a home business or something, you know, versus, you know, a commercial project on, on Main Street?
This is across the city. This is in the, the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code. So there's no distinction between a sub-area or anything.
Is, do some, do other jurisdictions have a different scale depending on the type of zoning that exists already? Because I can imagine there would be more complaints based off of increased vehicle trips in a more residential base... trips in a more residential-based neighborhood than there would be in a commercial neighborhood so, or a commercial district. So, you know, vehicle trips generated in a commercial district, yeah, they could be higher before it triggers that threshold, but maybe we would want something that's on the lower end if it's, if it's in a residential district.
Yeah, I don't know if they separate it by the zoning. It's, uh, it's usually a citywide distinction, you know, the number of trips. Yeah, part of the reason is, uh, we wanna track, uh, all the trips that are out there for both concurrency and our traffic impact fees, you know, so we will require that analysis with all the developments. But, uh, the, uh, one of the takeaways from a traffic impact analysis is are there gonna be additional traffic mitigations required, you know, either through SEPA or, or, uh, the concurrency, uh, lid may require something. So that's where the larger, um, developments have to do a study so we can make sure they're not triggering, uh, additional SEPA mitigations. But the smaller developments usually aren't significant enough in the trips to trigger Chapter nine is where we talk about street classifications. Uh, we're just kicking off our, our new comp plan, uh, process. Uh, I'm, usually with a comp plan review or analysis like that, there'll be some discussion on the street classifications. So I've highlighted this in yellow that, uh, this is an area that we'll need to make sure we update the, um, the city classification map, uh, should we make any changes to some of the street classifications or the categories.
So change it from Shoreline's website to ours?
Yes. That's one of those links that I haven't updated yet. There's a section in here on access management, uh, and that's chapter 10. You know, this is, uh, we debated on whether we can, uh, kept this in there or not. Uh, you know, this was more applicable to, uh, Highway 99 or, or Highway 104, which just touches the edge of the city. So we may or may not have any, uh, need to use this, but we felt it was better just to include it in case we did end up with some situation, uh, like the, the casino over there at 220th and 99. That one would fit within our, uh, would fit within this, but we don't have a whole lot of places where this would become an issue yet. Always planning for the future. Uh, chapter 11 is where we started to go through and collect details on access design. Uh, this is where, uh, we talk about how wide driveways could be, how close driveways can be to intersections, uh, new streets, how close they can be to other streets. So we, we have a, a number of information in there. Uh, we've also added a, uh, a criteria when we do have a parking lot, uh, especially for, uh, commercial development. You know, how, how long should the, we call it the parking lot throat length, but, you know, how long should that driveway be, uh, to try to make sure that we don't have, uh, excessive backups out onto the street? We want those to be contained within the parking lot. And so we added some criteria for that. Chapter 12 is where we get into some of the street design criteria. Um, a lot of these are standard, uh, tables that you'll see in, uh, Ashto or Washdott, uh, but we've, uh, modified, uh, in some cases, the criteria to more, uh, a lower-speed, uh, urban environment. You know, the, some of the issues with Ashto and Washdott is they're tend to be geared towards higher speed roadways. Uh, we want it to be more scaled to our, our city. Uh, scattered through here, there's a few, uh, design details for private streets. Um, you know, we get a number of private streets, uh, as part of the developments in the city. Um, and, uh, you know, while a private street, uh, doesn't have to adhere to all the city street rules, it's not a city street, we do wanna make sure they're still being done in a safe and reasonable manner. Um, inevitably, there comes the question down the road, once it's become a private street, is what's gonna take to make it a city street? You know, but we, we wanna have some, uh, say over what, how they build their private streets. They can't just build something that's unsafe. Uh, we also put some language in here for, uh, Wu-nurfs, um, 12.9. Uh, we've talked about some type of a Wu-nurf concept in the town center. Uh, we wanted to s- pardon?
That word you used.
It's a, it's a, I believe it's a Dutch word, so I've been practicing how to say it. Um, but, uh, we are gonna see some roadways, pedestrian car, uh, curbless roadways in the town center concept. So we wanted to start to, uh, put some, uh, design details, you know, down as to when these get developed. Here's some of the concepts that we'll look at. There's some, uh, additional information about those in, uh, in the comp plan and the town center codes, uh, but we also need, we're gonna end up with some design details and design information that we need to carry in this document. Chapter 13 is some of the intersection design. Uh, it's kind of continuing with the same information. Uh, you know, it's tables and design, uh, details from Washdott and Ashto. Uh, some of it's adapted to a more urban area again. Um, we do, the, chapter or section 13.3 is our designed vehicles. We wanted to just codify that our design vehicle on city streets is, uh, what we call a single unit 30, uh, SU 30, uh, which is your garbage truck or your delivery truck. I mean, with Amazon and everybody making so many deliveries, we need to make sure that our streets can accommodate them. Uh, we've also been, uh, trying to codify our curb radius. Uh, curb radius on the, on the corners, um, you know, bec- they're, they're a limiting factor when it comes to some of these vehicles. Um, and we're trying to always find that balance between what should a curb radius be? And then should we put in a curb bulb? And if we put in a curb bulb, that changes all that. So we're having more, more detailed design information for the curb radius, and if we decide to do, build a curb bulb or a curb setback, you know, how would that look? Uh, we have some more information in here about site triangles. You know, those are really important to make sure we have clear sightlines for safety, both for cars, bicycles, and pedestrians. Chapter 14 is a little more information about pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Uh, it's good to have kind of a section where if you really are focusing on, uh, a pedestrian or bike facilities, that you can have the design information that you need, uh, in one spot. It's not scattered all through there. Uh, chapter 15 is where we, we kinda touch on some of the roadside fix- features like fixed objects. You know, how big fixed objects can be, where they can be, how to keep them out of the site triangles, what is a fixed object? And then, uh, chapter 15, two, is where we get into some of the land...
I have a question on, on bicy- the bicycle facilities. Is that...
Sure.
Does this impact at all anything based on like light rail and how many more bikers we might have in the community and then how that impacts design criteria?
I don't think it's gonna impact the, the work that we've done so far.
Okay.
Uh, we're just trying to, um, uh, I guess, make sure that we stay current with some of the current design principles out there. Uh, this is gonna be a section that I have a feeling is gonna get updated more often in the future. Uh, we haven't put in, um, necessarily protected bike lanes or cycle tracks, uh, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to. I, I know we're building out, uh, a bike network element in, in our comp plan and, uh, you know, we have, we, we have plans to expand our bike network, uh, across the city. So, uh, as we build it, we wanted to have some detail in here to point to so that we, again, stay as consistent as we can. Uh, let's see. So we have a section, are there any questions? Sorry, I'm going too fast. Uh, so I have a section on landscaping. When we do landscaping, here's kind of what we would look for. Landscaping is another area that can be, um, it's generating a lot of discussion because a man- maintenance of the landscaping is becoming more and more of an issue. And, uh, you know, so we have to find a, that balance between, uh, putting in nice landscaping and still being able to maintain it. Uh, you know, we've got some really nice landscaping on 236th that's been taken over by some giant dandelions and, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, a, a lot of resources can be sucked up into maintaining landscaping. So how do we wanna, how do we manage that? It's a question that we're continuing to discuss and it's something that we should Uh, let's see. We have a section in here on, um, asphalt pavement design, and this is another one. It gets more into the engineering geekness of us. Uh, how do you design the asphalt? Um, there's, there's, uh, technology actually for designing asphalt materials is constantly changing with new development and new technologies and new chemicals. Uh, so we wanted to be able to standardize that as much as we can, trying to make sure that our, our pavement design, um, criteria stick as much as to the standards that are out there instead of trying too much, uh, uh, that hasn't been brought up to date or maybe some of the cutting-edge stuff. It, it adds cost. We want something that's gonna be both of a benefit, but still a reasonable cost and try to manage that. So we're gonna be adding more stuff to the pavement design section as we, uh, yeah, as this document grows. That's the main bulk of it. The last part of it is our traffic control devices such as signs and signals. Uh, but, uh, not too much has changed there. That's, uh, we're still following the MUTCD, the Federal Highways puts out. You know, a lot of the, the signs and, and, um, traffic device, traffic control devices out there are gonna adhere with that. Um, there's a new version of that coming out for all the transportation geeks out there. Uh, it should be out within, well, it was supposed to be out last week, but it hasn't come out yet. But it will come out, I know, everybody's excited. So, um, so that pretty much covers our, uh, Division 1 and Division 2. So I thought I, now that I went through that pretty quick, but does anybody have any questions?
Hello? Just a quick question, kinda on the asphalt, um, paving. Since, you know, over time, you know, our, you know, the town center's gonna become more dense, there's gonna be a lot more vehicle traffic and given what community transit has indicated, um, the bus traffic is gonna increase to serve the light rail stations. Um, so it's safe to say, you know, there's gonna be a lot more heavy vehicle traffic than what we currently see. So will there be in the future certain parts of the street network that will be designated as, instead of being, you know, like a blacktop asphalt, more of a concrete pour that'll last longer and will hold up better to those, uh, heavier vehicles?
Absolutely. Uh, we've already got, um, some roadways designated for freight. Uh, 56th is an example there and some that will be designated for transit. Um, a lot of our roads won't handle the heavy loads of, uh, dump trucks and, uh, buses and such. So, you know, we're gonna have our transit-class streets and our freight routes and do our best to keep them, uh, on those routes. Um, and I know that, uh, bus traffic is, is, uh, not only community transit is gonna be increasing their service, but I've actually met with Metro, King County Metro, and they're gonna, um, they're looking at, uh, extending some of their routes up to the transit station and then down 236th and down 56th. So they're gonna, uh, add a loop into the city to help serve our residents.
Amazing how quick that changes, cause I think it's, within the last year, I inquired about the one route that we currently have and whoever was at the meeting seemed to indicate that that route was going away.
(laughing)
And I'm like, really? So not only is it not going away, but it sounds like they're expanding, which makes sense, so...
Absolutely. With, with the, uh, new light rail service, uh, they, normally the transit agencies will take those service hours that are being duplicated by light rail and they'll reprogram them. And in this case, uh, uh, yeah, King County Metro's looking, looking ahead and they're already making some plans to loop through the station.
Does, I mean, community transit routes, for the most part, have been kind of fixed in our city for a long time. I can go over the history of the old 120, the 140, the 112, whatever it's calling itself now. It's had three different route numbers in the last few decades and, uh, there's some, some slight tweaks that it's, you know, um, the routes really haven't changed so much, but new routes coming in, especially from Metro. Will the city be able to engage with Metro and, uh, have some input on what, what roads in our network they're gonna use to, um, uh, get to our transit station? Say, for like right now, the, the one route that they do have, it, it comes up through 48th and then, um, continues on 236th to the, to the, uh, transit station. But there is a segment of 56th that has no public transit on it right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that would be greatly served if either community transit or Metro were to start using that to connect those people, like especially residents who are, um, you know, living closer to 244th, could have some, you know, a, a more frequent, uh, transit option to, to get to the light rail station. Uh, that was a discussion that came up during, you know, our latest round of town center. Even though that's in the Gateway Neighborhood, you know, we kinda seeded some of what we had zoned as town center. And part of that, much to my chagrin, part of that was that, oh, the distance is too, is too far, but obviously increasing transit in there, if, if possible, could really tie that, that section of the Gateway Neighborhood, uh, closer to the, um, uh, you know, the future light rail station and the town center a- as well. So, uh, it's exciting to hear that. So hopefully the city can have, have a strong voice in making any kinda suggestion. I'd be curious to see, you know, what Metro has. Have they given any kinda timeline with, um, for their decisions on that?
They didn't give me a timeline. They just, uh, they had, they said that they have already, uh, tested the route with, uh, one of their buses to make sure that they could make the turns for the route they were proposing.
Mm-hmm.
So that usually is a good indication that they're serious about that. Uh, we talked about potential, uh, stops. You know, they're already looking at where there's, uh, a good place for them to stop. Their route took them, um, up Van Ry into the station, down 30, 236th and then, uh, or, yeah, east on 236th and then south on 56th. So I think it'll serve that section of 56th you were talking about. Um, and then as, uh, as the road develops, then we can help shape where the buses will stop, um, so that we can make sure development incorporates the, the bus stop into their design.
Metro has a tendency to, to lay over their buses on the streets themselves, um, and be kind of a pain in various Seattle neighborhoods. Uh, and I notice they do that sometimes up on, on 56th. You know, I don't know, we see it, you know, depending on the time of day I'm driving there, but I see it every, every once in a while. With this expanded service and possibly additional routes, are they planning to lay over the buses on our street grid? Or will they communicate with community transit and figure out a way to actually have those buses lay over in the transit center itself?
Uh, I asked them that very question because layover is like gold when it comes to bus routes. And, uh, everybody fights about where they can lay over their buses. Uh, they told me that they have been in discussions with community transit and sound transit to have some layover space within the, uh, the transit center.
Okay.
Uh, with only, with only the one route, I guess their needs aren't gonna be more than one or two spaces tops and how they, how they work that out, I don't know. But, uh, that, that is something I keep an eye on because they do lay over wherever they can find a spot. You know, they've got certain criterias where they can lay over, they need a comfort station for the bus driver, um, and, uh, access, you know, uh, and... for the bus driver and access, you know, and something that's not in a time limit zone. But, you know, as we get closer to actually seeing the route in there, we'll make sure that we can have a layover space that works for everybody. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Doesn't look like we have anything for now.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
So it looks like our next item on the agenda is proposed amendments to the engineering standard streets. Is that kind of covered in, well, that's what I kind of thought. It's like, I just felt like we were talking about that.
I heard something about streets somewhere.
All right. So then it looks like the next item would be the actual public hearing on recommendations for amendments to chapters 15.05 and 15.10 of the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code, Buildings in Construction.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring some exciting code changes to you. We're looking at amending sections 15 of 5 and 1510 to update it with Washington State changes to be in the 2021 code. What that means is we're changing 18s to 21s. Very exciting. So we can dive into it. This is going to be most of our code sections, including the International Building Code, the Residential Code, Mechanical Code, the Fire Code, our Uniform Plumbing Code, as well as Fuel and Gas Code and other sections. We update the code cycle every three years. If it seems like we just did that recently, it's because we did. The last cycle was extended quite a bit, so because of COVID and other reasons, it was delayed. So we didn't get the 2018 codes that long. So we are also updating some code language to make it so that we can more consistently update as it's amended by Washington State so that you don't have to see me every three years as much as I want to see you, changing from a 21 to a 24. I don't think you're going to be all that interested, so I could bring you more exciting things that would be directly related to Mount Lake Terrace and how we'd like to make adjustments and amendments to those codes rather than just changing the year of the code that we're adopting. So most of the code language, IBC, IRC, IMC, and the International Fuel and Gas Code, a lot of the provisions are ones that were either already adopted previously and they provided consistency or more language so that the multiple municipalities would have consistent understanding of interpreting that code. Same with the International Existing Building Code, the Uniform Plumbing Code, the Washington State Energy Code is continuing to make steady changes to get to the legislative goal of 70% reduction of fuel consumption for buildings in 2030. So that's, the big push was on the energy code as well as several changes to the International Fire Code to create safer buildings by utilizing emerging technologies among other items. We also adjusted some of our fire code language as it was adopted previously when we adjusted from the 2015 to the 2018 code to make sure that the final determinations were inside the city of Mount Lake Terrace, including having the CED director be over the fire marshal and the deputy chief for, for our fire department, as well as the definition as of who the fire code official is, making that be either the fire, the building official or his designee, as well as, or if the term fire chief appointed authority or fire chief is used in the International Fire Code shall mean fire marshal, as we do have a dedicated fire marshal on Mount Lake Terrace that works me with, very closely with Christie and I and understands our interpretations and how city council and the commission wants to move forward. And we trust his discernment in interpreting code and moving forwards. We want to make sure that stays in-house as best as possible.
Is the fire marshal a city employee or is it employee of?
He is contracted through South County Fire, but he is appointed by the city manager to, for the city of Mount Lake Terrace. So we have our very own dedicated fire marshal from South County Fire, David Sherman. And if push comes to shove, if he's not serving our needs, then we'd be able to appoint a different fire marshal as, from the direction of you and city council through the city manager's office. So that was, pun intended, like trying to drink through a fire hose, but it's a lot of language to say we are continuing to move forward, making our houses safer, safer to meet the minimum life safety standards, as well as making the language a little bit more consistent so that people can read it and understand it and trying to get a little of the codies out of the code, if I should say it that way. Any questions?
Yeah, just a real quick one. So on, on the cover sheet here, you know, it shows 15.05 and 15.10 and then some other ones below it that have been, have strike throughs. Some of them say that's already been repealed, but things like swimming pools, mobile homes, warranties, is that just somewhere else now?
Yeah, I don't know why that section got attached because I printed it all out and it didn't come with mine because I checked twice. So for some reason, I added those sections. It just gave us a whole bunch of code sections that aren't being adjusted or amended. So 1505 through 150530 is the main changes and then each subsection of the codes, it's just changing the individual dates. And then the main major section would be 1510.025. And that'd be the Department of Fire Prevention Definitions. And then after that, there are no other changes made to the code that we're proposing at this time.
These shouldn't even be on here.
Correct.
No changes. Okay. That's what I kind of figured, I just wanted to make sure. Anybody else have any questions? Comments? Okay. So I guess technically this is a public hearing. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing?
All right. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? That motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Do we have anybody from the public here tonight that would like to speak to us on this matter? We're just going through the motions here. All right. Let the record show, there is no public here to, to speak to us on this matter. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close?
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Hearing none? That motion carries. So I take it staff is looking for a recommendation for us for city council?
Yes, please.
All right. I don't use, I don't have my normal little handy dandy verbiage cheat sheet, so I'm just kind of going to go off the cuff here. Actually, it shouldn't be me, somebody should make this, but would somebody like to make a, a motion to recommend the amendments to chapters 15.05 and 15.10 of the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code, Buildings in Construction to the city council? I made it easy, I just said it so somebody can just say.
Motion to open?
Oh, no. Just, you can either repeat what I just said or you could just say.
Motion to present this to council?
Recommend to council.
Recommend to council?
Yeah, basically, just read, just read off the.
All right.
Motion to recommend what I just said.
Let's see here.
Yeah, so.
So, motion to recommend. There we go. Okay. Motion to recommend amendments to chapter 1505 and 1510 of the Mount Lake Terrace Municipal Code, code for Buildings in Construction to city council.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Hearing none? That motion carries. All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the continued opportunity to, to serve your citizens.
All right. So next item on the agenda, item eight, Director's Report.
Matthew with his long legs and mine with my short legs. All right. Just a couple of things that you might be interested in. We have the accessible playground down at Lake Ballenger and that was fenced off this past fall because of not being able to put the surface, the surface scene down underneath the, the playground equipment. I was told today that that is tend, tentatively slated to be addressed on this Thursday. Quite a bit of public has been asking about that and of course, with the weather being nice, the kids see the equipment there and want to get on it. So hopefully that will be taken care of. We were just waiting on the contractor to get back here to finish that up. And then since we're in the process of working on the other section of the park and improving those repairing areas and if you've been down there, you see that the tennis court's getting ripped out and some, some other things there to make way for those improvements on the other side of the park. So opening up that playground's kind of a priority for folks using Ballenger Park as well, so hopefully that'll be taken care of. Good news on the hiring front, city has hired an assistant city manager to replace Stefan Clifton and she will be coming in mid-June. So good news there. And then we are in the process of, we've conducted interviews for the building inspector, which we haven't had for a few years? Year and a half? Three years? It's been a while, let's just say that. And that's been extremely difficult for us as well as other jurisdictions, getting a building inspector in. We've been contracting that work. We're bringing our top candidate in to do some ride-alongs for inspections to make sure that this is in fact his dream job due to the amount of inspections and review work and such that it takes. So coming in with eyes wide open. So hopefully that will progress and we'll have a building inspector onboard as well. And we are working on filling the associate planner position as well, so we should be moving forward with that. And then Lan was promoted to the executive assistant position for our new city manager. And so we're going to conduct some interviews on filling her position. So Lan will be teaching that next person to become the, the planning commission secretary and some other things that we're doing in, in community development, moving forward as soon as that position is filled as well. As far as development review goes, because we have some of those building code changes and fire code changes, we have stayed fairly busy, I would say. We were kind of thinking with interest rates rising that we might see a lull this spring, which is usually our uptick of development, but we really haven't seen that this year. So we're kind of cruising right along as, as we go here. So that's kind of where we're at there, just haven't really seen that kind of pan out here at the city. It's kind of blazin'. And then we started meeting on the comp plan, just trying to get some work started with our consultant about public involvement and some of the basic conversations that we need to have. And then once we have that, we'll bring that to the planning commission to kind of give you guys a kind of overview of what that looks like and ask for your input and comments as we kind of get rolling on that. So that process has started moving forward in what we're going to be doing here for the next year and a half. So that's kind of the status of that as well. And I would be happy to answer any questions anybody has if I can answer them. Any questions about what's going on?
I'm not hearing or seeing any. I do have sort of a follow-up question. Since the last meeting was canceled, what was the result of the artist selection for?
You know, I was going to ask about that today and I did not do that and I saw Jeff Betts. I don't know that they've made a decision yet that I'm aware of, but I'm dying to know too. And I was thinking about that earlier today, like I need to ask Jeff. I know it was going to go back to the Arts Commission and then the Arts Commission gives a recommendation to city council. And I don't think that recommendation from the Arts Commission has been forwarded, that I know of, unless you know something different. Okay.
Okay. So the, the commission's just making a recommendation council is actually the ones that are going to be.
Correct. They'll, they'll make the final decision based on that recommendation from the commission. I mean, I think it holds pretty good weight, you know, what that recommendation is, but I don't think that it's, it's been done yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Stay tuned. I'm excited to, to know what, what they decide as well.
Yeah. Hopefully that's just the first of many installations that we see.
Absolutely.
Not only around the town center, but you know.
I can, I'll go panhandle for money for, for art and murals and beautiful things for the city. I think it's really important.
All right. Just one more time, anybody else, any questions for? Okay. So we will go ahead and move on to item number nine, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. So first off, it looks like we probably have to do some excused absences. So for this meeting, would anybody like to make a motion for Commissioner Bettscher having an excused absence for tonight?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Bettscher?
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? That motion carries. Commissioner Bettscher has an excused absence for tonight. And then for the previous meeting, for Miguel, we didn't vote on, on that night, so we, we just wanted to follow up with you because we hadn't heard anything, so as to your, your absence on the, on the last meeting that we had.
I was out of town and I tried to get, you know, in connection with, with the, with the city about, you know, zooming me in, but there was a communication problem, but I'll, I'll be out of town most of the summer and, you know, connecting through Zoom.
That's fine. So, so for the last meeting, anybody like to make a motion to have Commissioner Sandoval excused?
I'd like to make a motion, a motion to excuse Commissioner Sandoval from the previous planning commission.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none? That motion carries as well, so Commissioner Sandoval. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries as well. So Commissioner Sandoval has an excused absence for the previous meeting that we had.
I want to see what happens if we oppose.
All right. Does anybody else have any miscellaneous business? Any other vacations or potential absences?
No vacation, but Commissioner Sandoval reminded me of an email I saw. Did I not, was it, was it phishing spam, junk mail, or did I not see an email come to us with a bunch of Zoom meetings for the rest of the year? Are those legit?
I think those are legit.
Yeah.
Those came to me, and that's how I got on.
Okay. Good. Like, I'm not clicking on any of these links until I find out they are real.
That's smart.
Okay.
Yeah. We've had some issues with, it will come in the guise of the mayor, you know, or a council member. And, you know, so your tendency is, oh, you know, somebody's sending me an email. But it's better to be leery than just click on something anymore, because, yep, they're fast at work trying to get to you.
All right. Anybody else? Not hearing or seeing anything. So especially since we are kind of heading into the summer season, if you do have a, like a vacation that all of a sudden pops up in between our meetings, you know, kind of like a last-minute deal, you know, just make sure you email staff. So, so we know going into, you know, that meeting that you're not going to be able to make it. All right. So I'm not hearing or seeing anything else for miscellaneous business. With that, I'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.